We'll call the September 26, 2013 Door County Board of Supervisors to order and rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Phones off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the power for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thanks. Rock call. Push the right button. It's not right. I can argue that some days. No, it's not. Presentation of the agenda. Mark Miller, seconded by Chuck Brand. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Correspondence, in your packet was the letter or sheet from the Parks Department on what the winter storage is for at the playgrounds, mostly Chuck, is it all?
Yeah.
And what the costs are. And also the unassigned fund balance. Has anybody got any questions on them? If not, we'll go to public comment. Does anybody want to make a public comment?
Yeah, I would.
Go ahead, what?
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
No, no. Very, very sorry.
Good morning, supervisors and chairman. I have, my name is Victoria Serenich, and I'm here as an observer for the League of Women Voters, as well as for a group of concerned organizations that members live and work in this community, and I've asked permission to read this very brief letter regarding your 2014 budget planning and pesticide application. Dear Chairman Osted and supervisors for the County of Door, the organizations represented on this letter have joined together to advocate for safe lawns in Door County and bring an end to the practice of repetitive and costly application of pesticides, including herbicides to private and public lawns. When planning your 2014 budget, we, the undersigned and your neighbors, ask you to consider safer alternatives for public lawns, parks, and playgrounds. The commonly sprayed herbicides are harmful, especially to children and pets, causing various forms of cancer and endocrine effects. The warning flags and reentry limitations are ineffective and insufficient. Rather than advise, against, or prohibit entry, make the lawn safe to walk and play upon. Moreover, universal application of herbicides is expensive and unnecessary. With a little planning, a lawn or a plain field can be taken off of pesticides and synthetic fertilizers. The natural lawn and field will be more drought tolerant and cost less to maintain. Please keep these considerations in mind this fall as you develop the budget for 2014 and make contracts for lawn care. Local landscapers can provide safe alternatives if you ask. To learn more or contact us, go to doorpropertyowners.org on the web. Respectfully submitted by Patrick Fitzgerald and Peter Sigmund, M.D., on behalf of Door Property Owners and Safe Lawns in Door County; Marnie Kasky on behalf of the Ridge's Sanctuary; and Door County Residence Bob Grave; Peter Wyatt; Victoria Serenich; Richard Dirks; Nancy Fisher; Russell May; Mike Serpey; Ray Stonecifer; Carl Scholz; and the organizations of the League of Women Voters of Door County; Door County Environmental Council; Lake Shore National Resource Partnership; Sustained Door Crossroads and Wild Ones. Thank you very much for your contribution.
Okay, everybody's got a copy of that in their desk, by the way. Hugh, did you have something?
I'd just like to make a comment, if I can, please, Dan. As probably most of you are aware, the bridge in Green Bay collapsed, and I suspect it's probably going to be collapsed or closed for a good period of time, maybe even a year or so. Door County receives many, many visitors from the Twin Cities, and that bridge is vital for them to getting to Door County. And what I'm asking is, the Door County Board of Supervisors should go on record and ask in the DOT to properly signage whatever route they're going to take, so the people, the visitors from the western part who come into that area of Door County have clear signage to getting up here, because it would be confusing if someone didn't know where you're going through Green Bay right now. It's just a torn up mess, and this is only an aggravation of what's happening. So, I don't know if that's from highway or where it should come from, but I think it's important we can make a preemptive strike here and make sure the signage is correct for getting back up to Door County now.
Okay. It's not in the agenda, so we really can't make a formal.
I understand that.
So, John can put it on the Highway Committee and then come back through the County Board. And of course, Gary Bies is sitting right back there.
That's why I said it now.
And he certainly heard you. So, is there any other public comment? Is there any response from the supervisors on the public comment? If not, moving along, we're going to call on Bill Schuster to give us an update on Sister City. He has another commitment, that's why we put him on so quickly, because he's got some place to go right after this. Bill, I think you can tell us where it's been and where it's going and...
Jill, get that up. First.
You're welcome. Good morning. I'm很高兴 today you're here. Welcome to our sister city, China, Jindizheng.
All right, that's my report. Okay. Hey, I have a coastal management meeting up in Egg Harbor, so I need to get going to that. I'm the host, and it starts in 20 minutes. What we're going to talk a little bit about today, and it's going to be very brief, is for those of you who are relatively new to the County Board, Door County has a sister city in China, which is about 350 miles from Shanghai, the city of Jinzhe. And just to give you orientation, you have Beijing up on the top and Shanghai right there. And the sister city relationship, and Jill, if you can go to the next slide, just to give you a real quick, brief history on it, in 2004, the mayor of the city of Jinzhe, via Brian Linden of Ellison Bay Area, made a request to the County of Door to become a sister city or a friendship city. In 2004, the County Board passed a resolution endorsing an effort to look into developing that relationship. Later in 2004, Charlie Most, then County Board Chairman, visited Jinzhe, and he signed some documents there, and there was additional discussions. In 2005, the mayor of Jinzhe and the County Board Chairman, Charlie Most, signed that agreement. Later in 2005, we had our first Jinzhe delegation, came to visit Door County, and included the vice mayor of Jinzhe. 2009, then Administrator Mike Serpey returned or visited Jinzhe and continued on the relationship. 2010, we had an additional delegation from Jinzhe, but more important item of 2010 is that the County Board signed a agreement, if you can go to the next slide, and there's a Chinese copy and an English copy. The vice mayor of Jinzhe and then County Board Chairman Leo Zipper and Administrator Mike Serpey signed an agreement establishing a relationship between Door County and Jinzhe. If you look at the agreement, what it talks about is enhancing mutual understanding and friendship between the Chinese and American people. And it proposes to continue on with that relationship for a period of five years. So, we have an agreement with the city of Jinzhe till June 2015 to continue this relationship, work on exchanges of people, ideas, and commerce, and the like. 2012, the last delegation from Jinzhe came to Door County. At that time, Dan Osted was the County Board Chairman, and we met with the Chinese, and at that time, they made a verbal invitation to Dan for Door County to send a delegation. Shortly thereafter, Dan sent a memo to Bill Shuduar from the Door County Economic Development Corporation and myself, asking us to look into the relationship between Door County and Jinzhe, and to explore whether there's continuing interest in it, look into opportunities to strengthen it, and eventually come back to County Board with a recommendation. Bill and I have brought that group together a few times, and we're in that process, and we'll be coming back to this board sometime in probably the next six, nine months or something. The other half of Dan's memo to us relayed the invitation from the mayor of Jinzhe for a delegation to go and visit them. To that end, if you could go to the next slide, Jill, this is the invitation, and to that end, let me go back one, that's the invitation via Administrator Murphy and, to my attention, inviting us to send a delegation to Jinzhe. Jinzhe is really the porcelain capital of the world. You know, they've been doing porcelain for, and I forget, 2,000 years or something of that sorts, and they have an international ceramics fair every so many years. And we've been invited to come at that time, and they have offered to pay for all our expenses while we're in that city, three nights and four days. So, what we have done is, if you want to go to the next slide, we've been casting a net out, asking who would be interested in going, and in front of you is a list of people who have agreed to visit Jinzhe next month. I should stress a couple of things, and Dan and Maureen have been very, very clear on this, that we have no budget money for this. All the people you see up there are traveling on their own expenses, and what we're doing, we had our last meeting last night, and the way it's going to work is people are leaving at different times, and we're going to meet in an airport in Shanghai, and at that point, I am then going to help the group get to Jinzhe. We're going to spend three days and four nights there. If you want to go to the next slide?
Could you read those names quickly?
Oh, I'm sorry. Myself, my wife Sonia, Bill Shuduar, Charlie Most, Mike Madden, Cheryl Shuduar, John Dietrich Potter, John Dietrich, Diane McNeil, his wife and other Potter, Kent Cruz, who is a semi-retired veterinarian, and his wife Virginia, or Jenner. We've had, it's interesting, the process, at first you have a lot of people who say, yes, boy, I'd like to do that. And they slowly drop out for a number of different reasons. One, it's not cheap. Two, at first they think it's going to be a guided tour, and what I explained, they had to get themselves to one point, and then we're going to be somewhere in western China, and then they're on their own to get home. That dropped a few more people. And I think as time goes on, doing a trip like this, some people just get uncomfortable and drop out. There will be certainly more opportunities, and one of the items that Maureen and myself have expressed to this study group that we've put together, and anybody can be on it, is that Door County government can't be the only entity in having a sister city relationship. It has to be a community event with the community working on the project. Door County will always have sort of a center role, because we represent the government, but we need industry, private sector, other schools and such to be part of this. Up to this point, Door County, it's been the government of Door County, and that's it. And I think, Maureen, we've been very clear that it has to become a community-based effort if it's going to happen. Want to go to the next slide, Jill? Once again, there's Jinzhe. You see over here, that's Dali, and Dali is a small town in what would be the foothills of the Himalayas. They aren't called the Himalayas right there, the Himalayas are up here, but they arch down, so it's in that same range when the two tectonic plates crush together. Dali is the location of Brian Linden, Brian and Jeannie Linden's center. They have a sort of, I don't want to call it a gift shop, but art gallery shop in Ellison Bay, and they have developed a center in a small town of Dali where people can go, and it's somewhat of an immersion in the Chinese culture. It's not your typical tourist spot. Because Brian was part of this initial invitation that came in 2004, Brian has invited whoever wanted to travel from Jinzhe to Dali to come and be his guest for an additional three nights. So, the entire delegation will be together for six nights, starting flying out of Shanghai, Jinzhe, and then going to Dali. Dali's about 1,400 miles from Shanghai. China's a big place. After Dali, everyone's on their own, the group breaks up and heads off in different directions. I'm out, I'll be flying at this time, right now, in two weeks, I'll be in the air, but everyone's traveling at different times. That's a quick update. Dan, did I miss any points that you wanted me to make?
No, the key point is that they're doing that at their own expense, that there's no budgetary money involved at all.
And going forward, to be quite honest with you, if we're going to have a sister city relationship that's going to mean anything, the program's going to have to develop some sort of budget, but that's going to have to be that community effort. We already have the city, the schools of Sturgeon Bay through Joe Studing. He's been over there, there's students coming next week, but we need to be working on some sort of fundraising for the future if this is going to go on. Think about it, 10 of us are going to be in Jinzhe, adds their guests, all expenses paid while we're there, for three days and four nights. When they've come here, we've provided them lunch, I think, so we need, if we're going to do this, we've got to step it up. So, given that, there's, you know, your Chinese lesson today is ni hao, that's hello. Ni hao. And then, at the end of this, xie xie, just thank you. Any questions?
As we move forward with this relationship, we have to remember that the economic development, the executive director of Door County Economic Development Corporation is the key visitor. It's wonderful that he and Bill Schuster are co-leaders of this, but the relationship that develops between us and Jindizheng could have an economic development component for us. Not only is Mr. Shuduar, of course, our executive director, and can develop that important economic development relationship, but he's also a member of the Visitors Bureau Board by virtue of his position. So, there are, in addition to the economic development, there's also potential tourism exchanges, in addition to that pottery and those connections to our arts culture. So, that's the key to this, and I know that I look forward to the report back from Bill, from the two Bills, Bill squared, about this trip and if the relationship is worth pursuing in future years, so.
You know, the Chinese have a very serious upper class now, and they're traveling all over the world, and they're spending a lot of money. Door County being a sister city to a city in China can be, and you mentioned tourism, they're traveling and they spend a lot of money when they travel. Yep. And they go to Washington Island, right? Yep. Any questions?
I'd like to publicly thank Bill and Bill Shuduar also for taking this bull by the horn, so to speak, and following it through to find out really if it's beneficial for the County of Door to keep this relationship, and that's exactly what he's doing. They've really done a great job.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Xie xie. Thanks.
Gary, you want to hit that light? Next on the agenda is Representative Gary Bies. Come forward, Gary. You got the floor.
No, we're blank.
Now, don't filibuster now for 21 hours.
I'm not known for that, so. Good luck out. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hugh, while we were learning about China, I made a call, and DOT Green Bay is well aware of that, and they're already in the process, but they'll keep that as...
Thank you.
...to get people around there, bring your pockets full of money up 57 to Door County, so.
That's what we need.
So, it's in the works.
Good deal.
And they will give me any updates if there's any issues that come up, so we'll work on that. I was asked to be here about family care, and I, that's just a message coming in there. My staff has, and I have been working with Ralph Hansen and Maureen to develop a bill since we were unable to get it included in the budget, which was my first attempt. And one of the things that they did in the budget was to require DHFS to do a comprehensive study on the sustainability of this addition into the family care process and program, and that is due in December. And I think it will be supportive. I've been, I have a good friend, that's the administrative assistance to Kitty Rhodes, who's the secretary of that agency, Kevin Moore, and he keeps me informed and keeps, gives me some of the game plans on how to get this thing going, so we're working very closely with him. Yesterday, I met with our new majority leader, Bill Kramer, who is the person that, once we have the cosponsorship period ending in October 4th on this bill, it'll go to their office, we'll get a bill, a number assigned to it, and then get it scheduled, assigned to a committee, and express my concern that I'm hoping for a quick and speedy hearing so we can get this issue taken care of and get it on the floor for passage, but somehow I've got to keep that coordinated with the report, because I think the report will come up to, come out to support our position on this legislation, that it's, it makes the health care affordable, and it'll take care of, I think, in the seven county area, we got like about 900 people on waiting lists, and if they were in one of the other 55 counties, there wouldn't be any waiting lists. So, that's what we're working on, and I had to click that so we stopped getting the drumbeat. So, I guess I'd open up to questions on that issue, if you have any, but I think we're in a very good position, somewhere in the process. I'll probably wait till after I have a hearing to make sure nothing comes out that's surprising, but I will then see if I can get a meeting with the governor to make sure that I have his support. I know he has a track record of supporting family care when he was, as a Milwaukee County exec, so I would expect his support, but I, sometimes I'd just like to make sure, so after we have a hearing and we've had an opportunity to say what they want to say about it, pros or cons, hopefully I'll just hear pros on this, on the hearing, but I'll meet with the governor, make sure he's on board, so if it gets to his desk, he's going to help me out by signing it into place. So, that's my current game plan on this issue, and continue to work hard for it.
On behalf of Door County, I'd like to personally thank you for your outstanding leadership on this issue. It has been wonderful to work with you. As the new administrator for you all, Representative Bies has been outstanding to work with on this issue.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Gary.
As the Door County representative to the NEW Family Care Board, which I'm also chair of, I can't thank you enough for living up to your promise. You said you were going to work on this, didn't work out in the budget, but you stuck with it. I can't express how many of the different groups that I've been involved in, Guar and other people who have looked to you as the champion of this issue, and I can't thank you enough for it, Gary. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Do you want to open up the questions on anything, or just?
Yeah, I've got about 40 other pieces of legislation in the, either been passed or in the process of passing. I know Leo just talked to me about one of his concerns, and I told him what my answer was on that, so I don't know if he's happy with that or not.
But I think you ought to share it with the rest of the people. I agree.
Well, we have a piece of legislation that's coming forward to make certain, on room tax money, that it goes for tourism where it was originally intended to. We have some communities that eat up the whole thing and put nothing into tourism, and other committees, other communities do it right, so we're just going to set it up that everybody does it right. The municipality can have their 30%, and the other 70% is going to go in tourism promotion for that area. And I think Door County's got a pretty good track record on this, but we have other communities that have gone the other way and don't want to give up this little cash cow for their area.
Susan, you have a question or not?
I do. Well, I have two things. One, thank you for the family care efforts. I totally agree with what's been said. If there's anything that you want us to do when that gets to the hearing, when it gets to the floor, whatever.
Well, I would hope Maureen and a few others, maybe Mark, come down and testify, and we'll be looking for people from the other counties, and I'm sure we'll get those. The administrator for this particular area where this fits into is the former Brown County person, and that's a great help also to have that person in that position. So, you know, things are lining up pretty good. You know, I'm pretty confident that we're going to be able to accomplish this. I haven't seen anything come up, but I understand their apprehension of the Finance Committee with, you know, with the Affordable Care Act coming into place in a few days. They just wanted to see how that fits in, and, you know, and how it starts taking place. So, whether that has an influence on this or not, I would think not, but, so that's what caused the delay. I guess that was the biggest issue that they were concerned about. So, the other thing was, is that it never came through on a budget thing, and they wanted to see it as separate legislation, which I'm accommodating them on that issue.
I wanted to thank you on another issue, and I'm speaking mostly for the Legislative Committee, but I think probably everybody else in this room would agree with the sentiments. We really appreciate the efforts that you've put into trying to help the state and to help people know about the impact of low lake levels. We appreciate the meeting you held earlier this year to try to educate your fellow legislators on this, and the push that you've given to Wisconsin Coastal Management to hold the listening sessions, and especially to have one here in Door County was wonderful. We know that listening sessions are only a beginning, and obviously the state needs to move forward in helping communities deal with how to live in this kind of situation. But thank you very much for what you've done so far, and...
Bill Schuster was a great help with that, too. I mean, it's...
Well, he gives credit to you for a lot.
He was extremely helpful in bringing this whole thing together and planning it, so a lot of the legwork him and his office were doing for us. Other legislation I have, we just introduced a bill, which I have been doing some interviews on different radio stations around the state, and that's in the domestic violence, where we're putting some more criteria in how weapons need to be turned over when somebody has a court order, a restraining order put into place. In that legislation, we're going to require that the person turns it over. If they don't turn it over, the Sheriff's Department, you know, makes an effort to do it. If it doesn't, the person is brought back into court for a hearing. If he ignores the hearing, arrest order for contempt of court is issued, he is arrested, that brought back in. We're going to try to get the weapons away from these people. We did one check in Milwaukee County, they had like almost 800 orders last year, and only nine were complying, so there is a problem, and so we're going to address that issue there. So, any other questions ever come up, just give us a call, we'd be more than happy to work with you or find out the answer.
Is one more all right?
Sure.
Ben Meyer, I'm the chairman of the Long Term Support Planning Committee here in Door County, and one of the concerns that came up regarding family care at our last meeting was the potential lack of local input that could result as family care is implemented. As I understand it, if family care moves forward and the funds are released, an RFP would go out for a managed care organization to take our counties into family care. And if, in that process, we could wind up with an MCO that is currently in existence but would not necessarily have to have our local input on their board, and if that's the case, I'm hoping that your legislation might address that issue and give our local counties some say in whatever MCO is selected to run northeastern family care.
I think with the people that we have in place, that we will get that from the secretary's office down to the agency head. So, I feel confident at this point that we will have some, and by my influence, we can make sure it happens.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Also, just, we'll add to that, there is some legislation that just went into the pike about opening up the Board of Directors of the MCOs to, if they go into another area, to allow representation on those boards.
That's correct. Well, thank you, and I love you.
Thank you, Gary. Leo?
Well, I was kind of thrown under the bus on my suggestion, however, I just want you to know that suddenly this came up at our town meeting last Monday. The Door County... The Door County Visitor Bureau had not been contacted relative to your room tax law changes that you and Senator Olson seem to think is a good idea. And you're doing it on behalf of the lodging industry and the Association of Visitors and convention bureaus. And a whole lot of it, I think, would have probably passed muster had you shared some of that information with. But right now, the way you went about it, or the way that it came to the Door County people, is that they're totally opposed to it. I would only ask that you make some kind of contact, either you or your staff or someone, to let them know what your intention is and to bring them up to date, because our representative in the town of Sebastopol was waylaid by this. He didn't know it was coming, he had not heard about it before. And I told him that I would have, I would bring it up, seeing that you were gonna be at the county board today. I've done my part, now I'll ask you to do yours.
Point well taken.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Gary.
True politician.
Administrative monthly report. Go ahead, Marie.
Yes, this is the first, my first year anniversary is coming up on October 1st, so this is the first budget process that I have been through here in Door County. And I'd like to compliment Door County on its Finance Director, she does an outstanding job. This budget was a difficult budget to put together. We have a very slow growth. Of course, you know that we, our budget can only grow by net new construction, if that's even allowable. Net new construction this past year was 0.5%. That amounts to an increase of about 116,000 on our $23.3 million levy. Roughly 70% of that was already eaten up by a new charge to us on, on behalf of AT&amp;T for our 911 service. There is a change with the 911 service. Many of us are going to cell phones instead of landlines. That's where that fee is coming from. Clearly, that fee was, amounts to about 81,000. Most of that is levy. So as you can imagine, when your budget can only increase by 116,000, and you've got a new charge of 81,000, it's making, doing business and the cost to continue very difficult. Like any of their household in Door County, we see increases in our electric rates and our water rates. We have ever increases in our employee costs. Although they are, they are, kudos to the Risk Management and Insurance Committee, our cost of insurance this year is only 2.5% increase over last year. Because of the changes that were implemented by Chairman Zippers' Committee earlier this year, it made this budget doable. So the leadership of our Finance Director, and a big thank you to her for putting us on a good path. We also had a tremendous amount of cooperation from our department heads, many are in the room today, so thank you to those department heads. They're ever mindful of how important doing a good budget is, and the need to keep in mind the taxpayers as we put these budgets together. In addition, earlier, about a month or so ago, the Highway Committee also rescinded an earlier item that would have made this budget even more undoable. So a thank you to the Highway Committee. And then finally, through the leadership of our Finance Committee Chair and that committee, pushing us through to the goal of delivering this budget without tapping into our contingency fund is exceedingly important. So so far, we haven't met the goal, but it's interesting and wonderful to be in a place where cooperation and teamwork is valued. So thank you to, actually, I'm looking at all of you, thank you so far to where we are in this budget process, and hopefully, when you meet on November 4th, we've all done a good job in putting this together. So thank you. And then I also, oh, there's one more item, the Administrative Manual. Things have been moving a little bit more slowly than they, than we had anticipated. The committee at its meeting on September, Tuesday, September 17th, had a very full agenda, so they decided to have a special meeting on Tuesday, October 1st, devoted exclusively to the Administrative Manual. And at that meeting, Mr. Chairman, the committee will take up the Administrative Manual and make the important decisions on whether or not that gets referred to other committees, or if it comes directly to this body. So those are the two updates for the month. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? If not, a motion to approve the minutes of August 27th, 2013 meeting, motion by Biz, seconded by Kathy. Are there any corrections or additions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's passed. Dale, you wanna make a motion to approve the first responders agreement and then explain it?
I'll make a motion to approve the first responder group agreement as presented.
Is she a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Roy.
Since our last meeting, we did meet with the first responder crew chiefs and went over the agreement, and everybody likes the agreement as presented today. And after this approval, then give it to the towns, villages, or fire departments to be approved, and we should be all set. And I thank, thank you for delaying this one, delaying it over for one meeting so we can get this all taken care of.
Okay. Is there any questions on it?
I only have one item, a very minor item, brought to my attention by several of the first responders also, just a procedural thing. Item number 17 shows the remit to including Eric Christiansen's specific name. They just thought it should be removed, that's all. It should just be to the Administrative Services Director rather than his name also included. So when he retires, his name's still gonna be on the document.
Okay. Done? Okay, okay. Any other questions? If not, go to your voter board and vote yes or no. Vote yes or no. That is a pass on a vote of 21, yes, no, noes. Next item is the approval of the operation agreement of the United States Agriculture Natural Resource Conservation Service. Hugh, you can explain that, I hope.
I'd be happy to. Essentially, the only reason this is...
First, do you wanna make a motion to approve it?
Yeah, okay, I'll make a motion to approve, see, what is it, resolution 2013-58.
Is she a second to that?
Yep.
Seconded by Mark Friesen.
The, in reality, the only reason this is on the county board agenda is because the agreement will expand over three years. And essentially, what it is, is just the operating agreement between, between the Natural Resource Conservation Service and Door County. It's, if you read it, it's sort of like reading the fine print on your automobile policy. Tells you you have to have liability insurance and how you work with the corporation to get the funds and stuff. So it's strictly a, an operational agreement between the county and this organization. So there's, I guess that's about it. I could try and answer any questions, if anybody had any.
Okay. Does anybody got any questions? If not, we'll go to the voter board in just a second.
Are you ready?
The vote is yes or no. That is passed on a vote of 21, yes, no, noes.
Snuck her through.
Pardon, what?
Snuck it through.
Snuck it through.
Wrong pick to say.
Next is an agreement, donation from the Door County Maritime Museum. Chuck, you wanna make a motion to get it on the floor?
I will make a motion to approve 2013-59, an approval of the donation from the Door County Maritime Museum and Lighthouse Preservation Society for preservation, rehabilitation, or restoration of Cana Island.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mark. I'm gonna bring Bob Dash forward, our Executive Director of the Maritime Museum, to explain what's happening. And introduce Trudy, I guess, huh?
Chairman Osted, Administrator Murphy, supervisors, thanks for this opportunity. Those who know me know that the opportunity to have a captive audience and a microphone is irresistible, so, and I'm, and I see you boldly have a clock up there, so I will try to keep it brief. This is the next step in what should be something that you take great pride in. The partnership between the Maritime Museum and, and the Parks Department in the operation and maintenance of Cana Island is, you know, a gleaming star. The Bureau of Land Management, who originally owned the property, holds us up to other organizations as, you know, the kind of thing that they're looking for in these public and nonprofit partnerships. I have, I can't imagine you both know, but I have a check for $100,000 that is our, our donation to the county to move this process forward. This is just the next step in what has been a, you know, a three-plus-year process that's raised 2.4-plus million dollars. To this point, has led to the construction of, if there is such thing as a modern pit toilet, we have one at, at Cana Island now, as well as the acquisition of a piece of shorefront property to, to construct a visitor parking facility, something that's been an ongoing problem since 1869. But, no, it wasn't a problem until lately. But, but really, I mean, the, just the fact that, you know, through this partnership, we're able to find and acquire the appropriate piece of property on the waterfront in Door County, and raise the money through grants and donations to construct that, that piece of property, it's great. And I would like to recognize, you know, the former Director of the, of the Parks Department, George Penny, he was, you know, he led the charge, if you will. He was out on point, and we'll never be able to thank him enough. But I would like to introduce also Trudy Herbst, our Director of Development at the Maritime Museum. Her and George were, you know, joined at the hip as they marched forward on, on writing all of these grants and raising all of the money. And so, also Eric Gelsen, the new Parks Director, who's now, you know, stepped in and is now the person joined at the hip with Trudy as, as we continue to march forward. So, again, I just wanted to say thank you for all of the support and, and the partnership that it, the successes the partnership has had. There's a lighthouse on your, on the logo of Door County, and it's a peninsula, and so it's maritime heritage, is its history. And the lighthouses, the many lighthouses in Door County, they're our monuments, you know. Those are the, these are the things that the public sees that really represents the history of the county. And of course, I think arguably that the Washington Monument happens to be on Cana Island, so. So again, that's, that's my comments, and I would, you know, if there are any questions, I would answer.
Our Parks Committee Chair will receive the check.
Great.
You have to prove it, don't you?
Make sure you accept it.
That's right.
All in favor, say aye to the motion.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Eric can come forward, and, Bob's got a check for the $100,000.
Is that made purely to Chuck, or is that to someone else?
Made to Cash, right.
Cash.
Come forward, Eric, and Chuck, and I don't know if you want, you can come up and take a closer picture if you want, Trudy. Go ahead.
So on behalf of the, of the Door County Maritime Museum and all of the donors, many of which are, most of which are, live right here in Door County, to accept, you know, this donation as we continue to move the process of restoration forward, so.
Okay, thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you. You get it, Trudy?
Got it.
They taught me that in captain school.
I guess just a little further explanation on this. This is the start of money coming back through the county and our accounting process to take care of the rehabbing of Cana Island. So during the process of getting an architect and getting the bids out and getting things going, so in order to pay some of those bills, the Maritime collected the money, did most of the groundwork as far as collecting it, and they're now turning it over to us in increments to be able to pay the bills as they come in. So that's what this is for. And I hope that I'm not too late to sign up to go to China. I think I'll have a real good time.
We still need money, so if anybody wants to write us a check for donation today, you know, please feel free, Trudy is glad to accept it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, that's it.
You know, Chuck, people go to that. It's really one...
Okay, the next item on the resolution is the limitation of expenditure funds. David, do you have something on this?
I do not, other than that we were going to refer it back to Finance Committee one more time, per Grant's request, to review it in a little bit further detail.
Do you have to have a motion on that to refer it back to Finance Committee, or can...
Yes, I think it's probably cleaner.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we'll refer it back to Finance Committee.
Okay, is she a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Dale. Anybody got any questions? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed. Ordinance establishing a bulkhead line. Who's gonna handle that one? Chuck? Go ahead. You wanna make a motion, put it on the floor?
Yes, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number 2013-15, which is the establishment of a bulkhead line in the Murphy Park area.
Seconded by Biz. You wanna explain it?
Sure. Recently, Soil and Water has been involved in beach rehab work, and this is one of the projects that, the Murphy Park is owned by the county, and we recently did one in Bailey's Harbor where we rehabbed the beach area for runoff and sediment not reaching the water. This right here is establishing a bulkhead line which runs from probably about three-quarters of the way out on the Murphy Park dock, going back towards the boat launch, which indicates to the DNR that we plan on doing either removal of some of the bottom sediment or placing additional sediment, meaning coarse sand into the bottom and bringing up the beach to a level of about two feet higher than it is currently, and placing some grasses along there to catch the runoff. So by passing this, we're putting the DNR notice that we plan on doing that.
Okay. Are there any questions? Grant?
Just for the record, you will note that the map that's referred to in the ordinance is not appended to the ordinance. That's simply because it has not yet been prepared by the surveyor, but it will end up being appended to the ordinance and will be sent to the DNR.
Okay. Anybody got any questions? If not, all in favor of this, what? We gotta have an ordinance, we gotta have, use the voter board. So vote yes or no on the...
Say, Chuck, would you explain line 22 to 37 to me? I'm just kidding you.
Oh, that's a survey law.
I would like to see the map.
You know, we got the updated ordinance emailed to us. Is that the one we're voting on, or we're voting for the one in the packet?
That's a good point, I can add to that. The one in the packet is outdated. It's the one that you had emailed to you after the fact. Brian Forrest is here. Brian, do you want to explain the change, if that's okay with the Chairman?
Sure. Everybody's voted but Dale.
No, these two appear.
Dale and Dave.
We can redo it.
What I'm voting for.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, Brian.
These two got an A on the test. There was a test on that.
The change that was made, the survey was done last year, and the bulkhead line that was prepared by Bodwin Incorporated, we had noticed that it didn't include the area out into the lake bed that we wanted to do. So I had contacted them, they made the change, and unfortunately, it was after the ordinance was put together. So they made the change and got the text to us in time for today's meeting, and I, I brought a, a map of the, oh, this is a preliminary map, but they're not complete with the survey. So if you're familiar with the Murphy Park area, this is the pier that goes out, this is the existing shoreline, and what we're proposing is this line to be the bulkhead line, where we would bring the beach out up and out further into the lake bed. It would create more beach. It also, as Chuck had said, we're bringing in a coarser sand to allow water to filter down into the sand rather than across it and to pool up, to create those areas where bacteria flow up.
Okay. Any other questions? Do you wanna start the vote over, or you two just wanna vote?
Everyone done, and everybody knows we're voting.
Yeah.
Okay, one more time. Okay, hold on. You didn't come through.
We can still vote in.
There it comes, yeah.
Knocked that one through.
That is passed on the vote of twenty-one, yes, no, noes. I have no new business that I know of. Oral Committee Report, anybody want to report? Ben?
I want to commend the Property Committee for their extreme discipline. When touring the Door County Historical Museum, we took a tour during our last meeting, and it was not easy and is not easy to tour that museum, to be focused on their potential expansion plans. There are so many wonderful exhibits and artifacts there that I challenge every one of you to go over there and spend less than an hour. It's not easily done. So with that, I again invite the county board to take a look. The museum is closing for the season soon, so planning your trip as soon as well, maybe after today's meeting, would be just about right. But it's a fascinating place, and it houses our heritage and history and really should be seen.
Any other Oral Committee Reports? Anybody have any questions on any of the minutes? Maybe we should take a break. Review of the vultures claims of bills. Anybody have any questions on any vultures claims or bills? If not, the next regular meeting is October 22nd. We would like to see most of you people come at eight-thirty to meet and greet Cindy Ayers, who's going to have the rehab division of the vocational services and new creative at the meeting, and she usually comes with some fantastic goodies. Anyway, it starts at eight-thirty. The meeting will start at nine o'clock. The other thing is, our Christmas party is going to be December 7th. That's on a Saturday night, correct?
Girl Harbor.
And it's going to be at Door County Maritime Museum. Go ahead, Hugh.
Traditionally, we have flu shots, I think, at that meeting, too. Has that, anybody thought about that?
I hope so.
The October meeting?
The October meeting.
Who's the head of the Health Department?
Ron Coler.
Would you check that out? Okay.
I'll check that out.
Any other questions? If not, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Seconded by Dale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.